Okay, I'm gonna call to order and everybody that's on the board can look up. And it's, and 707. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. How you doing?
Good.
Have a seat.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to call for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Sam, thank you, second. Thank you, Paul. Uh, any changes? That we need to make any?
Matt has one.
I have a change.
Okay, Matt.
I'd like to add, um, something on the agenda, food service.
Um. That's a discussion or is there something you're hoping to vote on? Well, either way, we'll do it after.
You're gonna throw it right around other legal business? Is that reasonable, Matt?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so at the very end? Okay, so we'll throw that just before other legal business.
Food service.
Food service.
Uh, any other changes?
Can I just?
Yeah.
The acoustics are not good here. And I can't hear number two. To begin with, whether acoustics are good or not, so I'm, I'm just gonna ask folks to speak up.
Okay, and I will try and speak both directions. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can I call for a vote? All in favor? Let's say that's unanimous, we're good there. Uh, public input and announcements. I did not receive anything. And I see a lot of employees, so. Welcome to speak, but, okay. Um, since there's no public, we don't have any discussion of the public. And now we have an approval of the minutes from 5:42. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Uh, any discussion about those minutes? All in favor, please raise your hand.
I'm gonna abstain.
Yep. Abstentions, Sam, anybody else abstaining? Any not in favors? Okay, so Sam's sustaining. Let's move on. Student representative updates, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I didn't recognize you, not on the screen.
Right, the lone person.
Get the full picture.
Going down the day, seeing the school. Sports, I think, have one more week to go until, uh, playoffs. Seniors, uh, two weeks, uh, from tomorrow is our last day, we graduate June 8th. Last week, uh, seniors got together and, um, Wednesday night, a few seniors set up a senior prank for the school. It was pretty, it was pretty cool, I liked, I liked the, uh, enjoyment from everybody, I think everyone liked it. And how, it used to be a thing and it kinda came back, wasn't around with COVID. But yeah, um, nothing, nothing else, really.
So do we get to know what it was?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Officially on the record, could you describe that prank?
So, first we, um, filled up, I, we didn't count, but it took us about three hours of nonstop blowing up balloons. We filled the stairwell and blocked it off with Saran Wrap so it could fill up. Then we put Saran Wrap around a couple places and aluminum foil in teachers' rooms and then, uh, a really, really smart senior came up with the idea of putting alarm clocks in the ceilings in different people's rooms.
That's great.
That was my idea. They're all set for different times and everything. I think there is one that hasn't gone off yet. I, I think that's the best part.
Tyler's like, where?
The best part was, I wasn't there the next day. And I was getting kids like.
Mr. Weeman put me in charge of, uh, the overnight process of it and every class, I was getting called to the office. Either go grab an alarm clock or, uh, pick up a couple of things, you know?
That's great.
I thought, I thought it was really neat. And, uh, thank you for allowing it, Mr. Weeman.
Just know, Tyler, you still have one. Somewhere.
His room, his, uh, we couldn't get to his room, so it was alright.
And Chris, I'll say, it was, it was nice to see something that was thoughtful, creative, and, uh, funny and not, not destructive.
Yeah.
Something that showed pride in our school and having a good time, not the other, which I think is awesome.
What happened to all the balloons?
Um, one thing we, and I, we all do feel bad about is we forgot, uh, latex and that late, people are allergic to latex and some of the balloons that we were using, uh, were latex, so before, uh, students went into the school, some of the staff and faculty had fun popping them off and getting rid of them, just so, um, just so no one had it.
Did you fill them with connect, with confetti?
No, a couple people suggested that afterwards. We did set up a couple water balloons though, so when someone went to go step on it and pop it. But yes. It was, it was fun, we were there from, uh, 8 to 11. Say it all up. It was, it was all around fun the next day, kids were laughing about it and everything.
That's cool.
Awesome.
I'm glad that's back.
Yeah, me too, uh, it's.
I don't remember doing anything fun when we did it.
I can, I can tie this on stuff that they did over.
Anything else?
Uh, the, uh, unified basketball team just finished up a game, the semifinals for basketball, and I heard that they did lose, which.
Burn Burton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but they had a, it was a great, great run, great season. Uh, it was, there was a lot of support throughout the community with it. I went to as many games I could with baseball and it was, it was a blast just watching the games.
I'd like to add, I was at the, um, underclassmen awards ceremony this week and that seemed very popular and pop, many students there, so I was, besides being a proud parent, it was great to see everybody and all the honors that were given out.
Yes, our senior awards, I think, are two weeks today.
Okay, that leads us to our principal updates.
Finally.
Who wants to go first?
Well, I'll go, because we keep her in the high school of five years old, that was. Um, so yeah, so our senior prank hack, uh, Tremendous, uh, he came in, um, maybe about three, four weeks ago and asked, hey, do you wanna do this? I'm like, okay, give me some ideas. Yeah, I wanna know what's going on, you know, but he had great ideas. He first thought about the alarm clock and the first reaction was, no. I thought about it for about 30 seconds, but, no, yeah, do that. I did, I will say, we checked on him that night and everything, everything, make sure he was good. We got rid of Mr. Miller's room, Math teacher, um, uh, aluminum foil and everything in his room that they could do. Check on the ceiling, everything on the desk, I mean, it was, it was funny, so. And I think particularly the teacher who had took it and liked, so that was fun. Let's see, we're also, we're wrapping up, uh, testing right now, some testing's going on for, uh, S-Backs. We wrapped up math last week, science, we just, uh, started this week. And we roll into, start through 60 in the next two weeks, which are, uh, progress monitoring testing. And then also, uh, we have one more AP exam to do on Friday, that's the latest, I just need to have in this, unfortunately, there's one, but we wrapped our AP testing as well. As Chris mentioned. Uh, senior activities, um, prank hack, our senior awards day is June 7th, the night before graduation, graduation rain or shine is on June 8th. Uh, if it's nice, we'll be outside, if not, we'll be inside. See what's going on right now, so scheduling's happening full force for next year, all our kids are getting their studies, but not what have you. Uh, and as BJ said, our underclassmen awards from last night, they really well attended. Uh, I was really impressed with how many kids and the parents who were there. Uh, and even with that, we had quite a few kids who didn't show for their awards, so I mean, I was really impressed with the size, had everyone show, we would have been at, uh, you know, capacity, we went on a mission, we haven't done it in a while, in two years, it's really nice to get back and do that, have that, um, that's part of the long tradition, so I'm really good to be there for that. It's Chris mentioned sports, uh, I believe this is the first spring season I can remember that it has not been snow on the field, uh, so that's been a plus. Maybe Luma was pretty great, but, uh, we haven't had any really, I guess you can have Bruce getting games or anything that's been snow, which is, this is the first I can remember. Let's see, what else? Sixth grade step up date's coming up on June 2nd, so all of our elementary school sixth grades are coming up to high school for an orientation on June 2nd. And then the big thing that, uh, we're looking at in the near future is Saturday, Prom. Prom's outside Steakhouse, yeah, I got you on that one, you got every, almost every interest I wanted to say you talked about, but you didn't get it wrong. So yeah, we have Prom coming up, uh, at, from 7 to 10, outside Steakhouse. We've sold, I think, right around about 100 or so tickets, so it's gonna be a very well attended event and, uh, looking forward to it. And, uh, on top of that, just in general, I want to say thank you to the board for your support over the last seven days, you know, which means we'll be moving on for next year, so thank you for your support and, uh, I will miss my time in the future. Any questions, sorry.
Don't see any, so.
Great, thank you.
Who wants to go next?
So, a few weeks ago, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Day, and I wanted to thank you all for writing and writing notes for us, that was really nice to receive those and thoughtful, it wasn't like thanks, it was actually for things, which is really appreciated. Our PTO at Shrewsbury, uh, put on a luncheon for staff, they came up and covered our lunch duty and recess duty so that our staff could actually sit together and enjoy a meal for the first time all year. And, and probably for some of our staff people, the first time in a few years because of COVID restrictions. So, it was really nice, there was a lot of laughing and, um, it was really fun and food was delicious. So that was much appreciated. We have a lot of events coming up, our next week, we have our chorus and band concert on next Thursday, and we have a field day coming up, uh, where the PTO organizes a whole bunch of games for the kids to play, there's a bar queue and it's like an holiday event, and we do, uh, multi-age groups or teams, um, that kind of cycle for some different activities around the day. And then of course, we have our, um, sixth grade graduation, which is coming up June 13th. Outside that, we also have some field trips and other fun events. Our pre-K class, they have a pre-K registration day on Friday up at Shrewsbury, we're seeing a bump in our registration, which is cool, we're going from potentially 10 students in pre-K to 15, uh, which is quite an increase, it doesn't seem like it, but it is. We also just received some new flexible seating for pre-K classrooms through, uh, daughter students and then tables, also there's some grant money, so our space is kind of freshened up and looking good. Those kiddos will be going up to Monshire, uh, before the end of the year, which is really exciting, uh, for those of you who have been in the district since COVID, I think the last field trip that happened before we closed was to Monshire, so it feels, oh no. Our K1 classes preparing a hike up to Shrewsbury peak. They're excited, they don't think that they can get to the top of the mountain, but it's bona fide, no delay for sure. They were also making, uh, strawberry rhubarb pies, little individual sized strawberry rhubarb pies today with sage, which looked amazing. And our sixth graders are going to work force tomorrow with Timmef, they went last Thursday, I got to join along because we were short staff, so, you know, at 7:40 morning, I was changing, to go hiking and be in the woods all day, which was great once I got there. They, they had some really cool activities for the students, um, just looking at life cycle and producers, consumers and decomposers, and they played a game, but then they got to go into the forest with a few, they had like laminated cards to look for evidence of different animals in the forest, um, it was really a cool activity for those kids and both our Shrewsbury kids and our Timmef kids did amazing and they're, they knew all the stuff already, they're great. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, you, oh, I got you. You're really funny, say, hello. Are you still here or?
You said pre-K.
Yeah.
Was an increase, are you seeing it in any other grades?
Um, so with some of our, I believe we've had like two families move in and with, uh, school like Shrewsbury, you have two families move in with a few kids and it can bump, uh, up, uh, and it works the other way too, if you have a family with a few kids move out, it can feel like you're losing a chunk of population. So we've had one family move in recently, who's now has a kiddo in pre-K, and then we have learned of more who are coming into the district.
Okay.
For the fall.
Good.
Awesome.
Dan Betts, principal from Wallingford, I don't know if I've been able to introduce myself in person for a really long time, I know there's some new people on the board, so I'm glad to see you. I know, Paul, I gotta catch up with you in one of the last meetings at MRU. Wallingford's moving, moving, similar to probably all the other sites. Uh, I think this is about as close to normal as we have felt in the last two years and I don't wanna be the one to keep bringing up COVID, but it is refreshing. I was able to go on a field trip for, uh, with the fifth graders, they went to Starbase and seeing those students in a completely different element, making rockets and stuff, it's just phenomenal. It was a great experience, sixth graders, they came back from Mark Forest Tuesday, they're going next Tuesday, I'm planning to go with them, right now it's a green light, uh, so I'll bring my hiking shoes that day. There, I feel like there's been a little bit of a jolt in the system at Wallingford and I know that others have as well, and so, um, we did a see here feel activity as a staff, it's taken a couple staff meetings to get through, um, but basically we kind of start off with, what should we never see, hear, or feel at Wallingford? And that's from students, staff, parents, um, and then once we get it out kind of the dirty laundry, we just dump it in the trash and we start with what should we always and only see, hear, and feel at Wallingford? So the staff brought up like over a hundred different ideas and then we came together last week and had to narrow those down into more common themes and we're still gonna narrow those down yet again. But we wanted to bring in the student's perspective and so, um, all of the grade levels are doing the same activity with their kiddos and we, we kind of ditched the what should we never see here feel to, um, document, but we're keeping track of what we should always see here feel. And so, um, I've gotten a few grade levels that have already done it, um, actually a handful, I just wanted to share a couple of the ways that students said, this is how we should see, hear, and feel, um, at Wallingford, so, um, pre-K, everyone be nice, singing, nice voices and loved. In Miss Merritt, our kindergarten class, they should always see Mrs. Merritt. We thought was like, super cute, and I was like almost in tears when I was talking to Mrs. Merritt, so I think it made her day, but it was just, kinda made my heart melt. Happy humming, birds chirping, yeah, this is awesome. Working together, laughing, super, super happy, which I thought was a California thing, maybe they're picking up on my lingo, I don't know. Helping teachers and each other, people saying nice things to each other and they should feel safe. So, um, so it's been kind of cool, we're gonna take some of their ideas and also merge them into what the staff's come up with, um, and now we'll kind of identify some of our core values, just kind of a hard reset, um, so we'll be able to start the year fresh next year moving forward. We have all those year-end activities coming up, uh, sixth grade promotion, we've got next week, Monday, Thursday are the lower elementary spring concerts, Thursday's the upper elementary spring concerts, so that'd be awesome. We did, uh, we did conquer the S-Back assessment and, um, I don't, I don't say this every single year, even though it's something that probably a lot of administrators do just to like psych up the, the kids, but, um, I feel really good about the way our students performed on the test. I walked through classrooms, I had some small groups testing with me and I don't think I've ever seen a group just sit down and take the test so seriously and just take their time going through the test and taking it, um, I would say in pride. And so it just made me feel good, I've been pumping them up, um, I know it's a test, it's not the end of the world, it's not the may or the will, but, uh, but it was just impressive to see them actually just hunger down, focus, taking notes, writing out the problems to solve in math and stuff, so it was, it was just really cool. We got to participate in cleanup day, uh, I know, I can't remember what it's called in California, for those who don't know, I'm from California originally a couple years ago, uh, but there, you know, there's always those cleanup days, especially birthday or whatnot, but here, I, I've realized, it makes sense to have cleanup day in the spring after the snow melts because there are a lot of things that appear as the snow disappears and so it's good timing to go around and pick up whatever trash has flown out, got buried under layers of deep snow. So the kids did a great job, um, we didn't lose any, so that's good because we do take them off campus and walk through the, all through, I walked with our sixth graders and some of them wanted to get in the water and pick up trash, but they were like, we'll leave that for another day, um, but it was, it was just a really good positive overall experience. Yeah, I think that's kind of the happenings going on in Wallingford. Any questions? Thanks.
Nothing to me, give me the thumbs up, let me make sure I can speak louder. I want to also thank you guys very much for the, uh, the cards that you sent on staff appreciation, they all enjoyed me included, uh, hearing from you and seeing what you had to say, it was very appreciated. The PTO did a bang up job for us, the entire week had activities, they had breakfast, every day they had a gift or a message or something in the mailboxes, every day, and one day they provided breakfast, uh, next day they provided lunch from one of our local, um, or Gouchfire Deli, and it was delicious food, uh, the next day they provided desserts. So they did a lot for us, this week they're sponsoring a PTO color run and it's a huge event, I mean, a lot of people are participating in the run-walk, but also they have a bouncy house, they've got a food truck coming in, they've got a lot of things going on to attract the community. So, we started that a few years ago, COVID had, um, didn't do it for two years, and we have a very energized and active PTO and, uh, they're bumping it up again, and so this could be a community activity for us for many years to come, so I thank them very much as well. Thank you for visiting and I haven't here and touring with school, we haven't done that yet, I don't know if we're going to, but thank you if you do get a chance. As you can see, maybe, that the walls are covered, they're covered with projects and research and they're covered all year long. The learners and their educators switch out the displays often, depending on what they're learning or researching, so there's a lot of exciting stuff that happens, just comes up on the wall. Almost, capitalize almost, all of our kids love being here and they're engaged in the learn. This is exciting to watch them do their thing. I hope you had a chance to see the Science and Math Museum. This is an absolute testament to the engagement and interest that drives learning. Each child learned their topic or topics to depth, they were experts in that. And then they shared their research with one another, classmates, ultimately, um, they shared their knowledge in this authentic and public presentation. This all began in the beginning of the year when they picked a real life problem, COVID again, ran everything, they were upset that they couldn't go on field trips and that there was no place to go, so they created this math and science museum for their, for their classmates and then they curated a field trip for all of their schoolmates to go through and, and share the semantics. So those kids, all day long, entertained and, um, talk, the younger kids, all of the stuff, on their feet, and then tonight, again, 5 to 7, so they're beat, the kids aren't used to standing up for seven hours in the day, but they did, they did a great job. So, taking that real life problem and putting it into a PBL, so they worked on that during their BBL section throughout the year, and if you had a chance to ask them questions, they knew. This shows us that they have love of learning, they know how to learn and solve problems, and they can enjoy the school experience. That is what education is about, not how fast they can take, add, or subtract on a test. We have a lot of things going on, I've sent a list out, I will continue to update you on it, every other day we've got something special going on. Our next thing is tomorrow evening at the high school, K through 6, music concert, all the kids celebrating, all the kids performing, still only probably take about an hour, but it's really exciting that they're all going over there. And I just heard that we have some volunteers from our music department in groups up at the high school that are gonna help us out, so we're excited about that. I wanna say, I was gonna end with this, but then, listening to Tyler, I wanna thank you guys too for your support of me, and I'll do that in a second. But I think the best thing we can do for our kids is to give them a chance to be their best, teach them how to learn and share their love of learning with them. Let them know that they have trusted adults to support them and care for them. I'm lucky to work with so many dedicated educators, we need more educators that know how much they impact the lives of our kids and those educators will never work again the rest of their lives. So I am calling out to our folks, we need educators to continue to be as dedicated as our educators are and, uh, continue to carry that torch. We have a wonderful new principal coming in and, uh, she's excited to get started, I'm very sad to leave, but I'm very thankful for all that you guys have done for, for me personally, but also for the Clarendon community and our school community. It's been a wonderful experience for 10 years, I think we've accomplished a lot and I think, kids are happy, that's what I got, so thank you for that very. Great, thank you very much.
I've got Maureen's update because, uh, a trend that you heard, there are lots of concerts happening, there are lots of, uh, graduation type things happening, there are lots of field trips happening, uh, Maureen has her concert tonight. So, uh, she is sharing that the fifth, sixth grade students are visiting Mark Forest like you heard some of our other schools doing. Pre-K is going to Wonder Feet in Rutland to study force and motion and make that connection in the classroom with some hands-on learning there. Uh, they're, they were also planning on visiting the library and receiving library cards while they were taking that trip to Rutland. K1 is visiting Hill Dean as part of their plant unit, grades 2 through 4 are collaborating on their pollinator garden with the Vermont Farmers Food Center's Fable program. They're also wrapping up their testing like you're hearing everybody else talking about. ELA and math were done a little bit ago, science is just finished wrapping up, they'll be doing their local Stars testing right here at the end of the year. Their attendance numbers are high and overall both teachers and children are thriving and looking forward to June 15th. looking forward to June 15th. So they're finishing the year off strong. I think it's safe to say that this year has been a long, challenging year, but as we've gotten into the spring, I think folks have settled into a better place. Yes, we're all going to be ready when June 15th comes, but I think folks are generally finishing the year off well, and that's a good thing to see after such a long, hard year.
Principals, thank you.
And board, are you comfortable with principals scooting out of here knowing that they have incredibly long days? Okay, thank you.
Okay, as they're scooting out, we have data education items.
Okay, so I will pick up where we left off last time and we'll keep it brief and we'll plan on continuing to do this in a way that we keep the conversation going so that we become a little more fluent in the conversation. So we had asked at our last meeting about some cohort data and to talk about that a little bit, so I've provided that for you. These are not new pieces that I'm bringing to you, but I want to call out just this cohort data and talk about that a little bit. These are S-Back proficiency levels over time. These are lagging indicators. Who wants to tell me the difference between a lagging indicator and a leading indicator? Pop quiz. If I didn't check for understanding, I would not be doing my job. What's the difference between a lagging and a leading indicator?
Something that shows up after the fact.
Absolutely. Lagging shows up after the fact. It takes a while for a lagging indicator to shift. Leading indicator is going to be that one that happens quickly. So these proficiency levels are lagging indicators. They are things that we are not going to make a huge shift any one year because of the cumulative nature of being able to read at a fourth grade level. You don't magically jump three grade levels because you have an awesome teacher on your proficiency level. When we were looking at our other data that was the leading indicator, we could see that year's worth of growth. We could maybe even see two years' worth of growth, but that might not even show up as a bump on these levels, believe it or not. So I gave you the biggest cohort graphs first, so you can see that we actually have been doing the S-Back long enough that we can trace a fourth grade group as they moved on up to ninth grade. You'll notice in that first graph, there's no eighth grade. That was the year that we did not give S-Back because of COVID. I've given you Vermont numbers, I've given you our district numbers, so that you can see as the state has navigated the last several years, how our numbers compare to that. If you look at the first three large ones and then two small ones, those are all ELA scores. I made the last two smaller because they're three years or two years. Those are kids that have just recently started taking the assessment. You can still see the trends, but I think there's far more information when we've got five years as a cohort. I wonder what you notice when you look at these graphs. I could tell you what I notice, but what I think and what I see don't matter nearly as much as what you think and what you see.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yep, absolutely.
When this says two, is that second grade or is that you're just?
That's slide two.
That's slide two?
Yep.
So we don't know?
Fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, or ninth are the grade levels that the students assessed. So this first graph, ninth grade in 2021.
Okay.
Good question. What do you notice? Adrian, you said you noticed something.
Well, I mean, it's just that we seem to generally be tracking the state. We are not always above it, which I would love to see. And I'm disturbed by the, as the kids get older, they don't go up.
Yep.
Which is just discouraging. I don't know why.
So two things Adrian noticed, we tend to track the same trend as the state, and those trends tend to go down. Other things people notice. Chris, you got a thought?
There's a report that the year's just goes down statewide and.
Yeah.
I just have a question about.
Yep.
Is that just rating numbers, school enrollment going down, or is it just overall with the education?
That's a really good question, Chris. Enrollment numbers in general across the state are going down too. I don't have that graph to show you, but in general enrollment numbers are going down too. I wonder if folks notice where the biggest downturn tends to be?
After fifth grade, like the fifth grade onward, right?
Yes.
Same thing we have asked.
And I wonder if we can tell, is it an after-fifth grade problem or is it the last few years' problem? Can we tell from these graphs which one it is?
I can't.
Maybe not.
I don't know if you guys can.
I think if you look at the third one, the 2017 to 2021 cohort, these students missed their sixth grade S-Back and then took it in seventh grade. They didn't test their last year of elementary and then they showed up in seventh grade and tested. That's a huge transition without a pandemic. I don't know if the transition is causing that. I don't know if the pandemic is causing that. I don't know if both are causing that. I don't know that from this graph.
I would think we're going to have to wait probably another year or so for the lag indicator to really see where the numbers end back at, so.
Yep.
Question though, were we seeing that same slide before the pandemic? Because this is a combined graph.
Yeah, you can see in your larger cohorts, like your second one in, 2016 to 2021, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade.
Yep.
You saw a trend of going up in district and statewide. That was pre-pandemic. So there were some spots where things were going up pre-pandemic. There were some, you can see our, even the first graph in, we moved up a lot to meet the state average pre-pandemic. But you can also see four graphs in, we were actually dipping a little bit pre-pandemic. So I think you see a little of both pre-pandemic. Some moving up, some moving down.
On that graph you were just talking about with the seventh, because it goes from sixth to eighth.
Yep.
So seventh, we didn't test?
The, yes, if it's missing, that's the year we did not test. Yep, yep, yep. So you can keep flipping and you can see the same thing with math. So the next set there are math. And these are the exact conversations when we get together as a leadership team and we look at these, we have similar conversations. You know, I don't show up to the leadership team and tell them, this is the data, this is what it means, this is what you should do. We try to interpret it together and we try to problem solve and we try to have those conversations around, well, what can we actually say this from this, but what can we actually not say? Where do we need to dive deeper and get more information? And then maybe that more information can tell us where we can do better work, if that makes sense. Math, I think.
Think realistically, the pandemic hurt our kids more than anything.
I think there's.
It would take a couple of years to build, or at least another year to build back up.
A lot of folks are starting to link the number of days remote to student outcomes, and you can start drawing parallels. They're starting to say there's some causation, but they definitely see a correlation. So the more days you miss, the worse your outcomes look. There was a pretty big national article about that with a lot of data in the article that was showing that. We are lucky in Vermont as a state that we had fewer remote days than a lot of other states. We did. Because the pandemic was managed in a way early on that we had much lower case rates than the rest of the country. So our schools opened earlier. Our outcomes look a little better than other places in the country because of that, which is really interesting.
I mean, are we seeing any correlation when we drill it down to more individual students?
Yep.
I mean, you would think that it would be a straight causation type thing if kids were not engaging in the remote learning. Do we have any kind of a handle on the test results for kids that engaged and kids that didn't? I mean, are we able to break that out? I'm just curious because I know, I mean, it's sort of, I'm sorry, it's similar to, you know, kids that don't show up for school and we, you know, we don't want kids that are going to be hardy and absent.
There are going to be outliers and exceptions, but in general, the less you engage, the worse you did.
Well, yeah, I mean, common sense would tell you the same thing. I'm just wondering whether there's.
I think the numbers bear that out.
Okay.
Yep. The last thing that's on here I wanted to provide you because I told you this, but I did not show it to you. So I wanted to give you the information. So when you see those graphs that look a little different at the end, I gave you a source from VPR, an article from a while back where they quote, "The new test is widely considered more difficult than the test it replaces." I did talk a little bit about the S-Back replacing Kneecap. I wanted you to hear that, not just from me, but from somebody else. And then show you our district numbers. So these graphs are from 2004 to 2013. Our Kneecap scores in district. You can see a sixth grade math and a sixth grade reading. And you can see that compared to S-Back these days, the state and our district, we might have been averaging around forty-five, sorry, about 65% proficient on Kneecap back then, throughout those years. When we started taking S-Back, we averaged 45%. So you can see that when we went from one test to the other, that number drastically changed. So the idea is the test was harder, so our numbers changed. So I wanted to give you that actual data, not just take my word for it, but those are the numbers in the graphs to support what I was sharing with you before, if that makes sense.
Having never actually seen the tests.
Yep.
Is it, and I know in math and English you're not so much fact-based, but there is a fact piece to testing and knowing what's true and what isn't, and having that background knowledge.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if historically we're seeing, since we've been, and some of this might be my assumption, we're tending to not throw out piles of facts to kids, we're teaching them how to learn facts and how to distinguish truth from fiction, and I mean, we're doing a lot of thinking but not memorizing. Are we seeing any kind of a result from that on testing?
So there is a challenge when we talk about the S-Back and we talk about how those tests are generated and what they're designed to do. So every year when our students take the S-Back, there are questions that might get tossed and never get used again because too many students get them right. Because the test is designed to sort students. If everybody gets a question right, what good is it asking that question? Does that make sense? If we have a limited amount of time and we can only ask so many questions, we want to ask the questions that split kids into two groups. You got it right, you got it wrong. So if they ask a question and everybody gets it wrong, are they going to keep that question?
Oh, no.
No way. That's a waste of time too. So the S-Back is designed with that principle in mind, that they're going to use questions that half the students get right, half the students get wrong. So if everybody in America starts teaching a certain thing really incredibly well because it's in the common core and that's what we should be teaching, and students start doing really well on it, that question drops off. A new question takes its place. So these tests become kind of a moving target around what students really are supposed to know. So knowledge becomes challenging there because if we just had a set number of facts that kids needed to know, that set number of facts would just keep changing. Because if everybody got them, the test would shift to some other set of facts. So teaching to the test is a terrible strategy because it actually doesn't, it doesn't work long-term. Because of that, teaching our students how to think, to be critical thinkers, to engage in the process of learning, what Fred was talking a little bit about, teaching students transferable skills. You want to figure something out, how do you do the research and figure it out? If our kids know how to do that, they'll do better on the test. This is not the best test in the world to show that they can do that because our students are not engaging in research to do this test. They are answering a bunch of questions based on reading. It's somewhat of a proxy. Students have reading in front of them and they have to extract some information from that reading. So it's a little bit of a proxy for doing research and being a lifelong learner, but it's not the best proxy. Does that, I know that's a lot.
Well, no, I mean, I can see how it actually does work that way because you're talking about interpreting the fact that you're presented with, and that, I mean, you don't always have to do research, sometimes you just have to distinguish what's true or what's helpful.
Arguably, it's a little better than the Kneecap at some of those transferable skills. Arguably, it's a little better.
How many states take this? I mean, do we have any kind of a national?
S-Back might be about, if I ballparked, maybe 15 states or so take S-Back. There might be about 15 or so that take PARC. DAN left, but PARC is a very similar assessment. I believe it's just a different company.
Do we have any of those wider numbers? Just, I mean, it's nice to be able to compare ourselves to all of Vermont, but that's not where our kids stay.
Oh, it's really hard to find data comparing state by state because they don't want you to. It's actually, I looked for it a couple of years back and it's really hard to find, believe it or not. Good question though.
Right, because this, the proficiency is just the state proficiency, it's not a national proficiency?
It's going to be any state that engages in S-Back. But then you could say the S-Back test defines proficiency as this score. PARC might define it as this score. So there are different vendors and different assessments used across the country.
Well, but comparing S-Back to S-Back, but you can't do that either.
They don't want you to. They don't want you to, yeah, which is interesting. The argument is that's not what the test is for. The test is not to tell you that your state is doing great or terrible. The test is one indicator along the way so that it can confirm or deny what you think you already know. So we shouldn't be comparing to Massachusetts. We should be trying to get better based on what we know we're already doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we're comparing ourselves to the rest of the state right here.
They, well, they tell us that we shouldn't spend, the state tells us that we shouldn't spend a lot of time doing that. The state tells us we should not compare district to district even, but people love doing that. And I want to keep it brief because these are designed to be every meeting and short, but I love the conversation and I'll say it again, I will talk about this all night long if people want to talk about this. The big questions we still need to answer, what do we want from our learners as they graduate from our schools? I don't think we know that as a full community. What's the best proxy for measuring that? Maybe the S-Back is a piece of that. Maybe a lagging indicator doesn't make sense. Maybe we need to find a leading indicator that's a better proxy. Maybe there are other things that we need to add as we look at board goals, you know, that really show us if we want X, Y, and Z for our students, well, how do we know we've got X, Y, or Z? We have to find that good proxy. And how do we engage our stakeholders in goal-setting for improvement within their areas of influence? What you saw in the museum here, what you heard from Fred, if we have our fourth, fifth, sixth graders setting their own goals, doing that research, learning how to be learners, and they're proud of what they produce, what a wonderful thing. If Mike Lannan walked into that room and said, "Here's your goal. Go research this and figure it out, and you need to do it this way, and here's the standard," that kid has no investment. So having students set goals where they are, having teachers set goals where they are, our principals setting goals where they are, my goal as a leader of our administrators, and then the board's goals, what is your realm of influence and what are the goals that make the most sense for you to set? If you want to shift the needle on some of these data points, what can you control and how can you shift that needle? You know, budget's a big one. And how do we, how do we think about budget to address this? If we decide that math is the most important thing for us, how do we shift budget to address that? If we decide ELA is the most important, if we decide that arts really matter as part of this picture, how do we shift budget to address that? And I think, again, big questions we need to answer. Hopefully an ongoing conversation and hopefully something we can keep on agendas as we discuss. Questions? I know I've gone long anyway.
Good. Could you send an email of just like sample questions that come? Could you send an email of just like sample questions that come off of these tests? Just so I could have a better idea of what, what it is? Because I don't have a third grader yet, so.
Yeah, right on, right on.
You wouldn't know it anyway because you don't bring it home.
That's true.
S-Back sample questions, fantastic.
If I can ask.
Definitely remember.
Brian, I just, something, um,
No.
One thing I want to talk, you talked a lot about
Yep.
different assessments that we have and our indicators that we want to improve and things like that. I also know that the public has found information about us.
Mm-hmm.
Could you very quickly speak to what is accessible in the public
Yep.
versus indicators that we have internally?
Yeah.
Because I think that has come up a lot
Yeah.
for us and it's something that
Something
as representative board.
Something I will bring to our next meeting, if you'll allow me to be on the agenda to discuss data again. I will bring information from the state's snapshot, the state's school snapshot, which was just released about maybe a week ago or so. WCAX just ran a story on it, I think, yesterday. VPR did one today. Uh, I will send you the links to those stories so you have a little context. I'll bring something from that snapshot, too. Interesting thing about that snapshot, schools are not ranked, nor are they compared to other schools. You get your district information and it is not stacking you up against somebody else. It's saying, "Here's where your district is, how, here's how your district's doing. Are you improving or are you declining?" Uh, what people can access other places get challenging to sort through because every website you go to with school rankings seems to have slightly different metrics. You might be able to find, uh, old VT Digger article that just talks about test scores and ranks schools in Vermont based on test scores. But if you're going to a website that ranks your school as like number 10 in Vermont, they may be looking at class size to make that recommendation. They may be weighing that in with test scores. They may be looking at graduation rates. It's hard sometimes to see under the cover where that number comes from. And if you go to different places, you know, they'll rank us as, you know, thirty-seven or forty-two or twenty-eight. Uh, so depending on the website you go to, there may be different pieces of information feeding into that ranking and sometimes it is hard to tell. If you dig onto the website and find something called methodology, they'll describe how they get that number, but sometimes that is hard to tell, um, if that makes sense. But I will bring some snapshot information next meeting. Good, good question.
All righty.
Cool.
Um, VSBA survey for boards.
So I asked that to be on the agenda, thinking that it was going to be readily accessible. It was mailed to school board chairs. And I didn't realize that until I double-checked because I was trying to find it this afternoon and I didn't have a chance to get ahold of you because I just had too many other things going on, to say, "Hey, BJ, look for that." We could always do it another time. They wanted it by the end of the month, but I, I mean, I don't, I'm sure there will be other boards that don't answer the question.
VSBA vision survey, is that what I'm looking for?
Yeah.
You can, all right, give me one second.
VSBA survey for boards, vision survey.
I am going to just do this simply and forward this to the board. And Brian. I guess, um, I apologize for dropping the ball on that one, then.
Well, I'm sorry I didn't mention it because I didn't realize it went to you either. I was just looking for it going, "Oh, I should break it, you know, bring it to the meeting," but it wasn't available.
Discussing questions in this survey, Brian. If VSBA is one, I'm thinking about VSBA.
Right that way, Sam.
Okay, so what I will do right now, though, um, I just forwarded it to you. Doesn't look that complicated. What they're looking for is for us to, it looks like to discuss these questions as, and give them feedback on what these, whether these questions are good or bad, is if I am reading that correctly. Uh, the questions are, "If VSBA is widely successful over the next five years, what will that look like to your local board?" Thinking about VSBA, what are the most valuable VSBA products and services? And thinking about VSBA, how could VSBA best serve the needs and interests of your board My guess is that's probably going to re, am going to require some discussion, so maybe at the next board meeting, that now that you guys have this, you can think about it and then come to the next board meeting with some feedback we want to provide to them. So that seemed like a good
Email.
approach, what we should have done today, but sorry.
Sure they'll be happy to get it regardless.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Requested by May 27th, so technically this should be done.
But everybody knows you build in an extra week or two.
Yeah.
The next board meeting will be on the first of June, so we'll only be a day short.
Okay, so we'll make sure we add these questions to there and we probably want to make sure Ann includes that link.
Yeah.
When we send out agenda item, board agenda items.
We could just do a PDF of the questions, too. Because, well, Adrian, is the intention that everybody submit this individually?
I don't know, they sent, they, they, I'm assuming
Submit it once as a board.
they sent some kind of explanation to BJ.
"Please help the VSBA board of directors in their quest to review and examine VSBA vision statement by discussing the questions in this survey and providing full board feedback on the following prompts."
So I would think it's one answer for the board.
It sounds like they want it together.
So maybe a Google Doc that we can come up with and single answer that.
I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you want to just try and combine it yourself and, and do it online or
How do we want to move, provide feedback to them? Like, do you guys?
Do you, do you want to think about these questions and come to the next board meeting ready to talk through answers together?
Perfect.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll attach the questions in the board packet so that you have them again and you'll see them and can be thinking about them.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, now I lost my agenda.
Retreat options.
Okay, retreat options. Someone want to take the lead on that one? How we want to move forward with that?
So Andrea, Adrian and I, we met to discuss some of the options we had, thinking about strategic planning and thinking about the retreat. Uh, we had, uh, I think Bruce had recommended reaching out to Castleton. I had talked to Castleton. They didn't have anybody in-house, but they recommended somebody regionally who could do strategic planning work. Uh, we did not follow up on that lead yet because the majority of this person's work has been around healthcare institutions. So we were going to follow up with, I think, the VSBA and somebody who had done more school level work. And that's where I'll leave the conversation.
So I had actually got, the VSBA meeting last, last week revolved around, the, the VSBA board has been doing strategic planning and envisioning work, um, for the last two meetings and then we have a big board retreat next month. And going through that process with them, I'm actually falling more in Lens camp at the moment. I know, right? Um, that, I think where we are is further along than what they do when they do strategic planning. And if we get together with our administrators, I think that would be wildly successful. And I still think the VSBA could be very helpful if we wanted to do a community-wide evening and have an outside person run it. They are remarkably, um, organized in that respect. You know, they correlate everything immediately and give you the results and move on to the next step and it's all very organized and there's no, you know, when we did it the last time, I, I think it really, it's helpful to have an outside person. But I don't think we're ready for them yet. I think we really could do the, the, the conversation with the, um, with the administrators and, and work through where we want to go and then possibly bring them in when we're trying to
Coordinate the community.
work with the hu, you know, the wider community so that we know we're doing it right. You know, and we're not going to have questions that aren't going to, and that we'll know it's going to be run smoothly and, and people will be impressed with the process as opposed to us looking like, you know, we're just looking at, at pieces of paper. And I know that's a tremendous amount of work to run something like that and to, to sort of get all the data together. And I think they're very good at that. But to work on our strategic plan, I don't, I don't, from what I sat through at the last two, two board meetings, I'm, I'm not
Okay.
VSBA board meetings, I'm not overly
So there might be a
convinced that that would be helpful.
Might be a more logical place to pull somebody in after we've had some initial retreat time together.
That's my suggestion.
Can you repeat that, Brian? I'm sorry.
Uh, it might be more logical to pull somebody in from VSBA after we've actually done some initial retreat work ourselves, just us. And I, I said I was going to leave the conversation, but I actually remembered something that I think is relevant. Uh, I will be working with a mentor that, that does have some good strategic planning background, so that makes me a little more comfortable, too. Uh, I met with two folks and had some, we had some conversation back and forth and I think one will be, one will be very helpful in that work. Uh, there's also a VSBA one-hour, what is strategic planning
There's a whole bunch of really
session that's free.
There's a bunch of good workshops that are like at noon time or eleven o'clock.
June 2nd, I will send it to the full board. If you have an hour on June 2nd and you just want to go, strategic planning, we keep talking about that, but what exactly really do people mean by that?
There's also one on, on Robert Tools.
An hour well spent.
Yeah, and one on, um, I think, you know, um, the different ways of running your, your board. They were all hour-long seminars.
And there's good podcasts, too. They have the SV
Well, this is like what would be a podcast
Right. After it's done. So if you want to go backwards, you can have those, too.
You're seeing it live.
You've got to throw something on while you're driving to work. Those aren't the worst to throw in the rotation.
Yeah. I think they'll be releasing them as podcasts.
And just for my two cents worth, um, I really think with the change in administrators that we're having here, I think it would be a great opportunity before we bring in anybody, um, to sit down with them and let them share with us as a board what are their goals and visions. Um, thank you. Uh, and, because I think that's important and, and we need to get to know them just like they need to get to know us. And, and then we can open it up wide to everybody, I think. So Adrian, I agree with you. I, I think, I think it's important that we get to know who the folks are that we've just hired.
Yeah.
Um, and that they get to know us because there's changes. And so we need to have the opportunity to just sit down and, and have an open and free conversation. And that, in my opinion, that's how you start building trust, is that way. And I think trust is tremendously important when we're talking about rela, and again, this is me, but I think relationships are important. And so we need to build those relationships with those administrators so that they feel comfortable coming to us and that we can depend upon them to not just tell us the good stuff.
Yep.
Because we all love the good stuff, but, you know, having been an assistant principal, I know it's not all good stuff. So, you know, but be able to come to us and say, you know, "This isn't working for me." So we need to establish that communication. I think that's critical.
If I could throw one recommendation in to wrap that conversation up, maybe it would be, maybe we do something in January? Because then a lot of things will be settled as far as new folks after, did I say January?
You did say January.
I was ready to listen to your
July.
I was going to say this, sir.
Excuse me?
I hope I January
We're all just listening to you, you know, Brian.
Nobody, nobody threw anything at me, so that's good.
We're waiting for you to finish.
We're curious.
How about two years from now? Two years from now, well, uh,
That's better, thank you.
Um, July, things will have settled as far as contracts and administrators. And I also would advocate for July because that gives me a heck of a lot more time to do a little more background research and, and I would feel more comfortable. Uh, I could potentially have met with a mentor and done some of that work by then. So if we could shoot for a July time, maybe we pick that date
Maybe towards the end.
next meeting or a meeting after. Yeah. Okay.
Perfect.
Cool. Thank you, everybody.
Um, that's the retreat options. Now we're on to new teacher meeting update?
New teacher meeting update. Uh, the best way possible that we could do that next year, meeting all the new teachers, if, if we could schedule something as a board Monday on one of our release days, like say our September release day, that would be a perfect opportunity to, to tack on to a meeting. Uh, and we could maybe have some refreshments for new teachers. They could do their little bit of new teacher work after the release day because they do tend to gather on those days. And then maybe at four o'clock, we could have light refreshments. You could meet new teachers, have that conversation.
Are we going to be able to get teachers from all
Yes, absolutely.
By whatever time?
Yes, absolutely. And, and it'll be done in a way that it wouldn't be asking them to show up some other day, some other time. It would be building on something that's already scheduled for them. So I think that, that honors their time a little bit, so.
Are you talking end of August or beginning of September?
September release day, which I, I can pull up calendar and tell you what that would be next year. Uh, that's the tentative thought. If that makes sense to the board, I think we should confirm that closer to there. Uh, that's the initial idea that I think seems to make the most sense coordinating on their end. Uh, the 26th of September.
Is the first release day?
Yep.
You're thinking it was a Monday.
Yep. Monday, the 26th, around four o'clock, maybe around 3:30. If we can nail that down exactly when we get closer, if that sounds like a good tentative idea for now, we'll keep planning on that.
Well, I think that's great.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Meet and greet.
Okay. Uh, teacher master agreement approval.
Um, everybody had it. They've all reviewed it, right?
Yep.
All know what you think. So we either need to approve it
I think you
or find a new negotiating committee.
Amen.
So, no, I mean, I honestly think it was, I'll be, I'm making jokes, but it was an exceptionally, um, collegial and cooperative process. And it was really, I, I mean, I could only, it was pleasant. I mean, we had some really great conversations, just sort of casual, sitting table to table, you know, talking about stuff that's going on, things that they liked, things that they wanted to see changed. You know, we got to money and, you know, that's always a little trickier, but, but we came to an agreement that I, I think is exceptionally reasonable. Um, it gives them a decent raise and it, it isn't, I mean, nothing's going to save our budgets in the next couple of years, so, I mean, you have to pay people. And I think that's only fair. Um, we agreed to four percent for, for three years, you know, four percent every year. Um, we increased some of the buyback capabilities for the wellness, um, articles. Um, we touched on evaluation issues. Um, I'm trying to think of any of the big changes. There weren't really that many changes to language. But there was a lot of, a lot of conversation and a lot of it had to do with trust. Um, and I'm happy to report that, you know, in, in full compliment to you, Brian, you know, when it, when we said, "Would it be okay if we don't memorialize this in the contract because it seems like a, a specific issue? Would you be comfortable knowing that Brian will address this with you and will discuss this with the teachers and something will happen?" And they were comfortable with that. On, on more, you know, probably on two, three, maybe four issues, which was, I, I thought was tremendous. I mean, I, I, there were a bunch of new people there, so I don't so I don't, say what you want, guys, but as a, as a, you know, person who's negotiated a bunch of contracts, I was thrilled.
One of the statements that was made was, Brian used to be one of ours, so we trust him, which is important, so.
Right.
Thank you.
So I'm throwing my support out there. I'll answer any questions, or other people in the committee can answer the questions, but I suggest that we approve it. The teachers have approved it already, which is like, and we're getting very close on support staff, just to let everybody know, which is, which is also wonderful. That would be more painful, just to let everybody know. But also needed.
Do you want to call the vote?
Do I want to call a vote? Sure. I make a motion that we approve the presented teacher master agreement that is good for three years, starting this past year, because we're behind the times. So for this, this current school year and the next two years coming.
I'll second that.
That's a good one. Discussion? Questions? Was I enthusiastic enough?
Mm-hmm.
That's a separate one. Okay. BJ, you want to call your vote?
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I would like to abstain for other reasons, so.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like it passed.
Thanks. Very excited. I'll send a note to Brendan.
Okay. There is now an executive session, and I'm going to actually recuse myself from this executive session. And I'll see in a few minutes.
Yeah, we need, we did.
Oh, we need a whole paragraph thingy.
Fun stuff.
Do you have, oh yeah, you're bringing that up. Okay.
So we need that finding.
Okay. After making a specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage
To discuss
To discuss contracts. Can I have a motion for, to do that? Adrian, any second? Someone down there? All in favor, raise your hand. I would like to abstain. And then the next one?
Now, motion to go into executive session.
And I guess, can we have a motion to go into executive session? Sam, down there, we have a second. All in favor?
We get down there.
Looks like everybody, I'm abstaining. And like I said, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
And we can scoot down to the room we were in?
Looks like everybody's back, so just kind of
Yes.
Give it to, I'm going to give it to you, Len. You taking over from now?
Well, do we, we did negotiations under committee reports, right? I just want to follow the
Oh, yeah, good. Did, is there anything to add to negotiations if we jump on the committee reports?
Um, no. I mean, because I said we were in almost finished.
Don't we have to vote to come out of executive session?
Yeah.
Oh, do we? Yeah, good call.
Oh, good idea.
Good call.
Oh, I can't do that, I wasn't there.
Did we, did we adjourn the executive session by consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
What time?
Okay, we're out of, you're out of executive session at 8:45.
Okay. So Personnel Committee is next.
So then Personnel's next. Okay.
Wait, are we done with negotiations committee?
Yeah.
Nothing?
We voted the contract and we talked about
Okay, now on to Personnel.
Now we're on to Personnel.
Yes.
So I would, we didn't have a Personnel meeting tonight. Our next one is scheduled for June 1st, I believe it is. But we do have a couple of contracts to bring to the board tonight. First one, I would like to offer a contract to Kristen Simonetti as teaching principal at Shrewsbury.
I'll second that.
I'll just share that the Shrewsbury Hiring Committee unanimously voted to send Kristen to the board for approval for this position. And my sense was, you can chime in, Adrian, that they were very excited.
We are. I think there's just like enthusiasm bubbling. Thanks.
And I guess the only other thing I'd say is that the process was a good process and allowed the community a lot of input. And so Kristen, I think that's important that you realize they think a lot of you. So congratulations. Well, we haven't voted yet. Wait. So, any other discussion?
If you're, if you happen to get the position at Shrewsbury, please bring your winter boots in the winter and not try slip and fall on your high heels.
All those in favor? Oppose, abstain?
I'm going to abstain, but enthusiastically excited for you.
So that's done. Congratulations. And we wish you the best. We really do. And Mill River's losing a little bit, but I get that. Shrewsbury's gaining a ton.
Well, we're not losing a lot from her.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to offer a contract, excuse me, to Bjorn Brent as Director of Technology, Data and Innovation at the Mill River Unified Union School District.
Oh, second. Oh, and has a hand.
IT Director.
Two-year, two-year contracts.
Okay. Good point.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. And again, just so that folks understand, four of us participated in the interviews. Jody was there, myself.
Karen McCullough.
Yep, from, the librarian from Mill River and the assistant principal from Mill River. We're all there. And we had two very good candidates. We really did. But it was, again, unanimous. And we felt that we should offer the contract to BJ. So there we have it. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed, abstain? Once again, congratulations, BJ. Long ways from Fairhaven, my friend.
Yes. Thank you. I can't thank everybody enough. I'm assuming I have to do the next part?
Yes.
Okay. I started with the board because I wanted to be part of this community. And, you know, my career's been educational technology, and I can't express how much that this is my dream job in my own community. And I thank this board so much for that opportunity. It also means I have to step down from my current position as on the school board. Totally. And I, it's hard, but thank you, everybody.
You can come to every meeting. Don't worry.
I know I will be here quite a bit. And I will probably be at Personnel, helping Len with the spreadsheet and entering things in. And I will probably be building these graphs for Brian to bring.
Don't worry, I'm putting you to work.
So I will not be a stranger by any means. And so I think I officially have to say thank you, and I guess I resign my position on the school board effective immediately.
Well, and I'll say this, BJ, I appreciate the work that you've done. And, I mean, I've known you for a long time.
Yes.
A long, long time.
Yeah.
And I think you've done a lot to help unify this board in the short time that you've been chair. And thank you for that. And I mean that honestly. Thank you.
It's been a great opportunity. Like I said, this is, I loved it.
I'm going to really miss him. Policy.
You need to have technical questions.
I got a lot of them.
I will be part of the leadership team, so that team, I guess I'm going to be spending the retreat with you when that comes up and just be on the other side.
We expect a lot, just so you know.
Yes.
So I guess with that?
I'd like to say one thing. So I joined this board during a pretty turbulent time in March of 2021. And the board was very divided at that point. There was a lot of not-so-good stuff that happened in a very short period of time. And BJ, you were always somebody who tried to keep everyone together. And, you know, you really brought us together. And I thank a lot of what I've learned in the first year because of you. So, thank you.
And I, everybody, I've learned so much from everybody. This has been an amazing experience. Roller coaster at times, but amazing. And it was kind of cool because I started, when I started, it was, my name was on the ballot twice, one for Wallingford and one as a merged district, because we were, it depended on whether we got approved for a merged district or not. So I got to spend six, a few months as a Wallingford-only board member, and then we merged, and I was part of the original merger. So I was very honored to be part of that. Okay, I'm going to take a seat next to our new principal in Shrewsbury. I'm stealing my wall, my name tag, so.
Should, should the board accept her resignation? Is that reasonable?
Oh, can we?
We better. I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of BJ as board chair.
As board member.
And board member.
I'll second that.
With regret.
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Opposed, abstain?
Nope.
I've no longer had this one, so I don't think I can
Thanks, BJ.
Thank you very much.
Next Personnel meeting, don't we have to accept
He brings this.
You can still come to the meet and greet for the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
Play my part.
Okay.
Does that seem personal?
Question? We have any writing?
We do have it.
We have it written already, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else in Personnel?
I'm thinking, which is very dangerous. As long as we're still in Personnel, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Tyler Wedeman as principal of Mill River.
I'll second that. Also with regret?
Yeah.
Again, with regrets. All those in favor? Oppose, abstain? Then we are good. Thank you for that.
I just thought of that.
And I think I'm done.
Are you sure?
Yep. Next is policy.
Okay, so, we have an D, two policies that we hope to adopt, which is policy D-21 and E-15, which is totally my mess-up that we did not get to do this last time because I didn't get stuff to Ann in time to get it warned and sent out and everything else. So does everybody have it? Okay. Good, because I don't know where it is. So I make a motion to present, I guess, to adopt policy D-21 and E, can I do one or two?
Just one.
Okay, D-21. Policy D-21, which is, hold on. I want to say the name of it. But now I got to find it.
Special education.
Special education? Thanks. Okay, so can I have a
Good job.
Thank you. Can I have a
Made a motion, need a second.
I need a second. Sorry. Thank you, Adrian. All in favor? Okay. Again? Abstain? Opposed?
Abstain, I haven't read it.
Okay. There you go. And then I, motion?
You make.
I'm, I don't even know. I'm so tired. I'm adopt, making a motion to adopt the policy E-15, which is the bonus payments to staff. So need a second?
Second?
All in favor? All again? And any abstain?
We just all abstain.
Okay. That's all I have. Our next meeting is, we didn't have anything else. We did not have a meeting last time because I messed up. So our next meeting is June, hold on. It is
7. 14?
14, at 5:30. And hopefully at that one, we're redoing or relooking at stuff. Okay, so now we're on to buildings and grounds?
Nothing much to talk about. I'm going to try to schedule a meeting for the first part of June. That way I'll get a talk with Gary and find out who's doing what in some of the schools and what we're, what we're going to be working with. But that'll be probably, I think, to either June the 7th or the next week after, Tuesday, hopefully. I'll let you know.
Good.
Moving on.
Community engagement?
So community engagement, we are looking forward to, we've learned more about the survey that is going to be coming out from EsserGrants, and progress is made on that. We very much are looking forward to this welcoming new teachers event and starting to have in-person events come back to us. We're so excited for them to actually see people from not just their shoulders up.
Hold on.
And are looking forward to the future of how our community engagement events are going to go. Really holding on to a mixture of the inclusivity and ability that virtual events give us and hybrid events give us, and having some of those in-person ones. And just real big excitement also towards really uplifting the events calendar so that folks all around can see all of the wonderful, cool things. Like right now, I'm sure you've all heard, there's a billion things happening because it's springtime and school season. And we're really looking forward to getting the word out to let folks know, including all of us, what wonderful things we can go to and get to sit next to our neighbors and other community members as we enjoy all the wonderful things our students are doing. Our next meeting is June 14th at 6:30. It will be hybrid. And we look forward to seeing you there.
When is the next conversation?
Community conversations need to be scheduled.
Okay.
That is part of the upcoming, community conversations are upcoming, because we were negotiating kind of with, do we do virtual, do we do in-person, are we going to co-opt it for surveys? So they became nebulous in all the hiring that we had done. So we are looking for, that is going to be on the topics of the next is community conversations and their future. Look for it.
Love it. Okay, next is
Finance.
Finance Committee, which is
Liz is not here, so the pay orders need to be read and
Doug.
Doug has them printed out.
Perfect.
I've got a sign already.
What? This guy.
I, what we normally do is to look at all of the checks that go out or going to go out, all the payrolls and stuff over the last couple of weeks. There are three different lines There are three different lines I'm going to talk out to, and we'll have voting probably after each. It'll be a little easier than to try to put everything back together at the end of it. So first off, will be the warrants for payroll. This is all of the staff and some of the others that are around from May the 6th under a regular of a checking site came to 55, I was going to do this the second time, $556,523.
506, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. I'm sorry, Doug. Ignore me.
Okay, $556,523.59. And on May the 16th, another run was out for $6,174.92. Comes to a total of $562,698.51. I make a motion to reapprove for exigiture of that. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Is any, we will go to, let's see, we go to the vote.
Discussion.
And then, oh, yeah, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I will call this to vote. Those in favor of that amount, raise your hands. Looking, I see unanimous. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, that has passed. The second one coming up is for the General Fund. We have one, two, three numbers, and we get into another one. General Fund from Karen was $445,576.25. The General Fund from Mike came in as $11,283.40. And the Lunch Program that came also through Mike was $49,474.25. In for a total of $506,333.90. I put out a motion, no, excuse me, any discussion?
We do student activities too. Are you going to? I think he's going to do that.
Student activity.
Yeah, I've got the other third one.
Okay.
That says up there. Discussion? Okay, I have the motions. There a second? There's a second. All right, then I will call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And is there any negatives? Any no's? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that is, has passed for Preman.
And then the student, we have to do the student activity.
One more, too many. Three more papers. All right, the last one is for Student Activity. It's going to be kind of easy. The only activity that has been there, Shrewsbury, Clarendon, Tinmouth, and Wallingford had no entries for activity refundings. Comes to the amount of, from Mill River, $7,936.30. Is there any discussion?
90 cents.
Hearing none, I make a motion that that be passed. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any, any, we shall set now. In that case, we are going to call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Thank you all. Any other, any negatives? Any abstentions? It has passes. I'll sign both of them. And we'll be gone. Thank you very much, people.
And the next Finance Committee meeting is May 23 at 5:00 p.m. I'm not sure of the format. But I wrote it down.
Okay. Uh, Ad-Hoc Committees.
So I know we talked when we were up in Shrewsbury last week or two weeks ago, that Len and I were going to get together and try to get a game plan together on the surveys. We have not gotten together, but we need to make it happen. So, you're back in town, so let's make it happen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And now we've got Lunch Program on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
We added that.
So, yes.
So I just wanted, I wanted to bring up the Lunch Program. We received an email yesterday from Fred saying that due to increase in food costs that basically ran out of the federal money and that we're not offering fruit and veggie snacks anymore at school. And I just didn't know if there was anywhere that we could take money from, if there was anything available to keep it going. Because I just feel like that's, we're only talking a month of the school year left, and I feel like offering fruits and veggies at the school is an important thing.
Yeah, totally.
So I just wanted to kind of start the discussion of seeing if we can figure out a way to keep that going.
Yeah. I don't know the details of that grant. I can talk to Fred and I can see. My understanding is, and Jody, do you know about the grant? Was this something that Shrewsbury did too, to get the fresh fruits and veggies?
So it is. Very good. Before I was in school, yes.
Okay, fair enough.
And no longer qualified for this.
Okay.
But we have had alternative ways to contribute on that.
Okay.
And so I completely agree with that and it's important to, um, community and part of this development. Everybody's support healthy minds.
Yeah.
And I can commit to writing a note to talk to the food service staff tomorrow about the ways in which Shrewsbury.
Okay. So I think, long story short, if we can find the funding somewhere, we can work on it.
I think it's important to say. Yeah.
A dollar amount here?
I don't know. And I think, I think what happened is everything was moving along perfectly fine with the grant, and veggies and fruits were coming in, and we were paying for them, and the price went up, and nobody realized that the funding was going to run out before the end of the year. I think it just snuck up that the prices had gone up so much. So I don't know what the amount on the grant is, actually. All I know is that all of a sudden, we found ourselves in a position where we ran out of funding.
Yeah, that's also maybe use like Esser Funds for anything like that.
The challenge with that is the timing. It would take us far too long to try and do that.
Is it only Clarendon that ran out?
I mean, are there funds in the other schools that could be shared?
I don't know that the other schools had grants and were pursuing a program like this.
So they all funded those kind of things differently?
Locally, probably. Yeah.
So we actually, yeah, it's a tricky thing.
So I think it was a surprise, and I think we can sit down and try and figure out if there's a way to locally fund it. I can't imagine it's a ton of money to get through a couple of weeks, but we can have that conversation.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other legal business that we need to discuss?
I have one I'll throw out there. We need to think about who's coming to high school graduation. Because I think BJ, as Board Chair, was going to be presiding over certain parts of the graduation ceremony.
Doug, are you?
Doug?
We had a conversation.
Do we have a second?
He's going to let me. He's going to let me. So I got to get ahold of Mary.
Yeah, perfect.
See what I've got to talk.
Awesome.
What am I going to do? What do you want me to do? My point is that I'm up for reelection this coming March, and I'm not so sure I'm going to come back or not.
Okay.
I want to go out like that.
For sure.
It's a great thing to do with the kids. It really is. By the way, I'm going to, no, I'll tell you later.
Okay, okay. So Doug's on. Perfect.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, agenda building for next meeting. I need another piece of paper. Sorry.
Gosh, what do we need to do at our next meeting?
Okay, so next meeting, we will?
The SBA survey.
Yes. Board Chair.
Board Chair.
We need to have a discussion about Board Chair. Because we'll have the discussion on June 1st.
Right.
No, but I'm saying for agenda building, we have to elect a Board Chair. That's all I meant. All right, so what, the survey, and Brian, you will?
Is more data?
Everybody just bring your V SBA survey responses. I will kind of pull and remember.
I can do a quick data piece. I was wondering if it, I was thinking central office reports when we get back to Wallingford so that at Tinmouth, our next meeting, we wouldn't do a lot of report-heavy meeting. Is that reasonable?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good idea.
That sounds good.
So survey, Board Chair, data.
Thank you. That'd be great. Was there something that we pushed? At last meeting, I feel like we talked about something and then said needed to get pushed. But I don't have my notebook, so I don't know what it was. Or it might have been pushing it even later than.
Can we have an update on the?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What I've got down was the CO updates for Wallingford. And then we were going to talk, I think, a little further along about organizational structure, admin evaluations. But we won't be ready to do that until.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Because I remember the same thing.
Okay. Sorry, what was the last item we just put on there? I lost it.
Updated food.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Where's our meeting on the 1st? Is it going to be at Tinmouth?
First is Tinmouth. 15th is Wallingford. Did bylaws get wrapped up?
Uh, we have Personnel before the June 1st. So bylaws are almost, so we'd have to push it till the next June meeting.
Do we have the time in that meeting?
Could it be, because the meeting's not looking super heavy, could it be a 15, 20-minute bylaws piece and done?
Yeah. Yeah, we could do after-year.
After data, do the bylaws?
Yeah.
Len, what do you think? Is that?
I'm sorry.
20 minutes? Is 20 minutes enough time to finish bylaws?
Businesses are so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. That way we'll get them done.
We pretty much finished them up there tonight. I do think we want to discuss, the committee piece is still, you know, how many members and those kinds of things. I think that's important.
Sam, can you bring the updated version that you were editing and stuff? And then we'll just pick up right where we left off, which was.
Yeah, that's right.
Matt?
Also, next meeting, can we get an update on the work on the old district building?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Gary will be back, so we can do that. Do we get maybe a brief update on Wallingford Board Member? If we've heard anything from the Select Board?
Yeah, we got progress.
So we got a, we got a couple of tiny things, and then we got bylaws. I think that seems reasonable.
And Personnel shouldn't be too much.
Maybe a contractor too.
Yeah, but that's about it.
So time for two or?
Well, at some point, we still have to work on an evaluation for you.
Yes, yes, because I want that too. Yep.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn at 9:14?
Still moved.
Unanimous?
Yep.
All right, see y'all later.